Like the city of Sagatuck City Council meeting for May 27th, 2025.
My daily, it's unified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anderson, here, Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner. Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stan.
Here. We have a quorum. Russ is at Charlotte's soccer game in Grand Rapids today. So in addition to cheering them on, can someone make a motion to excuse his house?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Gardner.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Um. This is to the mayor. It was a very meaningful and beautiful Memorial Day. Or, yeah. So thanks to all who were involved. It was just, it was nice. And it's so great to see so many people out. And I love at the playground seeing all the kids looking down from the climbing. But it was beautiful day.
Thank you. And then this week Sagatuck Wilds officially opens. Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Thursday.
Thursday.
There's.
Oh, cute.
Okay, we have that.
Which is, I'm not ready for that. But I got a chance to walk the trails with the city manager and superintendent last week. And it's just, oh, my gosh, it's beautiful. And it's so quiet. It's really nice. So that's pretty special. So that's, that's what I have. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. And Tuesday evening here. So I'm still adjusting to today being a Tuesday. So bear with me here. I was telling staff today, I'm like, I got good rest this weekend, but I'm like sleepy all day. Feel like I'm dragging a little bit. So wanted to touch on, since your last regular meeting, the severe weather event, Councilmember Dean had kind of touched on it at your workshop. And I'm glad Mr. Herbert's here tonight to maybe hear some of your feedback. But I noted in my report, obviously, you know, we all know significant storm events with spawned numerous tornadoes more inland, but certainly resulted in high winds and a number of trees down in our area and streets that were blocked, including park streets and, you know, one way in, one way out. But we really want to commend the fire department for their response and securing so many different locations throughout the tri-community, as well as our public works department. Scott told me the entire team answered, you know, in the first round of calls, they all responded in the middle of the night and worked hard to safely secure a number of areas and do what they could while it was dark in the middle of the night and waiting on utility crews and then responded, actually, what, at least one particular staff member didn't go home at all that that night. But the rest of the team got a little bit of sleep, came back in and throughout the day worked to clear several intersections that that had trees down and were able to get everything cleared except for one here on Butler Street, which they were still waiting on the utilities. But they did it all safely, did just a fantastic job. Scott's communication with me and with his team and I was actually had an opportunity to ride around with him at one point during the day. And I was actually working out of Public Works because that's where we had internet that day. So we were down here at that city hall. But very impressive to see their work and their response. The county did declare a local state of emergency and we have submitted our expenses and some photos to emergency management for some possible reimbursement. And we'll see if that that goes through or not. But really appreciate Public Works' response. Thank you, Mayor, for touching on Sagatuck Wilds and the ribbon cutting on Thursday. Excited for that. Maple Street, that design work is progressing. So I wanted to mention here publicly that we have another open house opportunity now that we have some further kind of design details and from Scott and the engineers teams walk through on June 3rd, we'll have an open house here at City Hall. Two opportunities to stop in from 3:00 to 5:30 and 7:00 to 8:30. It's come at any time that during those timeframes, be plenty of boards set up. You'll see exactly where the sidewalk is proposed, exactly what trees are likely going to have to be removed, exactly where the road's going to be at, how wide it's going to be. It'd be a really good opportunity for folks to really meet with the folks that are designing before we get too far along. So we did send out, I think today, letters went out today. And then we got out information via email and social media last week. Want to send a big thank you to the CBB for your new drugstore wall down the street. They unveiled that on Friday. And really, I think they did a fantastic job with the with the design. Really a great refresh, great, you know, imagery of the tri-community and the different areas to explore, focused on upcoming events with posters, there's holders with all of their beautiful guides that actually have been just, they just updated all those guides. So folks can grab a guide from the one of the holders. There's information about the interurban. As obviously we know, there's parking pressures here. And there's a QR code to go right straight to the CBV website that they keep up to date with events. Wanted to quick touch on, I know some of you might hear about it, maybe Joe, I don't want to steal his thunder if he was going to touch on it, but I think there was some chatter on social media about billing for Cal Lake. So folks that got the postcards, not the digital bills, but the postcards, there was an issue with the date billing that was on there. So I talked with Daryl, or I had some correspondence with Daryl this morning, and they're working on some information that we can share with the community and how they plan on kind of working through and handling that. So more to come on that. But just want to let you know that it's on the radar and being worked on. So I think that's what I, oh, the clerks team wanted to, I can't read my writing here. So I'm like, what did I write? So I really wanted to commend Jamie and the election inspectors and Sarah for, it seems that we keep getting audited by our, you know, but another great audits of our election processes. We keep getting randomly selected, but we keep showing great success with that process and really want to commend them for well done on the election and an audited process that really proves that that proper processes are in place and they're being followed.
Now, this is a joke, but maybe they just want to go with cities they know will have a perfect audit so they get it done quickly.
That's gotta be it. That's gotta be.
Yes. You know. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any agenda changes, additions, deletions? And yeah, Commissioner Lovers, I see you're on Zoom. Do you want to appear as a guest speaker?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Listening along.
Okay. Well, thanks for joining us. Great. So that will take us to public comment on agenda items only. I don't think there's anyone in the room, no one online. Brad, do you want to make a public comment at all? Nope, I bet. Okay. We will go to item nine, the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Yep. I'll give a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
A second.
Any questions or discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, staff reports. We've heard from the city manager. Any questions about the treasurer's report? Any questions about the clerk's report? Anything for planning and zoning for Ryan to take back to Luke or answer himself? Any questions for DPW with Mr. Herbert in the room? All right. We don't have Sergeant Haas. I don't think John is on any questions that Scott could answer on engineering. Okay, we're back to, onto boards, commissions, committees, beginning with the fire district. Thank you, Dan. Welcome. I said, thank you, Dan. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good to be here. Dan Fox, I'd have to say this right, Council Representative to the Fire District Administrative Board, for the record. This. Go to that first slide of mine. Please. The ones I sent you. A dot two PDF. Then a dot two on the end of it at this. This afternoon, when we shared, we went back and forth and I went back and forth on site. We're making. A believe.
Yep, I'm going to have to grab it really quick. So give me one second. Okay.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Sure. A lot of stuff flying around. God, there you go. I mean, it looked, you know, because it's got the budget thing on the front. I apologize. For today's date update, first one, please. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm struggling.
We're all good. We're not in a hurry.
You got to get new staff, Jamie.
Who?
Okay.
This is the incident update from for the full month of, virtually the full month of April, actually is the full month of April because this was received after the end of April. Not a great deal of surprise here. The calls were on power with the prior month. Response times a little longer, whatever, 30 seconds-ish longer than the time before. That's a that's a number that's, you know, you manage to it, but it's dependent, highly dependent on where the calls are and so forth. So you can't totally perfectly. EMS continues to be the number one, all a little lower than the total last month, but 64% of the total. Go to the next one. Unless somebody has a question, we go to the next one. This is the the map. I've increased the size of the of the legend on the right because I couldn't read it hardly on the other one. I'll ask them to do it, but sometimes they do, sometimes. So you can just generally see where within the city and beyond the city where the calls were. There's any particular surprises there. I think fire calls are up a little bit. Next one, please.
What is the good intent thing?
Good intent is like a wellness check or somebody needs, you know, whatever.
There's a cat and tree, right?
I mean, it's a hodgepodge of things that don't count.
There's 600 good intents?
No, that's the cone.
Oh, God.
Vibes?
It took me a half minute.
Right.
I shouldn't have said that out loud.
600 cats, 600 cats. I thought about stripping out all those, the column of numbers. As I said, I don't think there's anything. This is, these are the response times for the advanced life support, life EMS times for April, where it's split for each of the areas of the fire district, Sagatuck North, Sagatuck South. South being primarily Peninsula and so forth. And the township. And a generally favorable trend there continues over the prior contractor. These are the numbers I just, it's kind of for general purposes, but where the fire district's budget comes from by jurisdiction, by each of the three jurisdictions, the census by each of the three jurisdictions, and the call volume by each of the three jurisdictions. And again, some of those things like call volume, it is what it is. I mean, you don't, you don't say to one jurisdiction and the other, you got to cut down your call volume. It's just, here's what it is. The next one, please. And then this is kind of a quick budget overview with with a little bit of commentary. You all have the budget either directly or from online, remains available online for the coming fiscal year. Go to the next one, Jamie. This summarizes through 2024, so 20 years that calls have risen. 130% for the 20 years, 50% for the 10 years, 56% of EMS calls emanate from south of the Kalamazoo River. That may seem like an extraneous fact, I'm going to play a little later. Since 2014, the fire district's efforts from resulting in grants, cost recovery, donations and such, have brought a million, $100,000 into our coffers. That's money that taxpayers don't have to give. So, and I think it's pretty formidable. I believe, I could be wrong on this. I think I have it in my head. The largest of those three categories is from cost recovery. Currently, the facility at 3342 Blue Star is at physical capacity, also lacks a sufficient water supply. It's a two-inch main, needs to be a four-inch main. There are overnight sleeping rooms on the second floor of that building that are not sprinkled. They need to be sprinkled. We need the four-inch to be able to do that. And the place is on a septic system since 1986. So that's plans to take care of that are within this budget. As were our personnel needs for two additional full-time firefighters slash EMS slash short-term rental inspectors. The slash is because each of those people will be able to fill any of those three slots and an administrative aide who we used to have on the front desk and haven't had for a few years. Next one, please. Some notes on the budget, as I think we talked last time, the second fire station, the time being referred to as the South Station, co-located with the Douglas Administrative and Police Facility at 415 Wiley. It continues to be planned. A non-binding letter of intent has been written and is in Douglas's hands right now. No funding for that particular move, none at all, is in this budget. Nor will it be. That budget includes the one-year, one-time addition of .4 mils to fund water sewer improvements. Talk more about that in a little bit. At the North Station, one time.
Where would the funding come from for the the South Fire Station?
We're still talking.
Okay.
The possibilities, I don't mean to be, the possibilities include, I mean, they've, they've made a pitch to the state already, although as we all know, that's a dark word. Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. Douglas did very well from the state with the acquisition of that bill very well. And we kind of followed Lisa's lead on that and submitted for it and got it in under some sort of time deadline. That's one. Village certainly is another one. So those, those are primarily where you get the money for something like that. So that's a major capital.
So the .4 would go towards the
Only for the
Just for the
The water upgrade, water sewer upgrades at the current building.
And then the prior budget was adding the three personnel, adding those with
That's within the
The current budget. And then this will be for the new budget. Got it? Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and we just, as an FYI, the negotiations we've talked about for some time continue with Life EMS. A chief mentioned it. I kind of wished he hadn't, but he mentioned it in a public meeting. So it's public. Life's, life was on a, as you may remember, the life was on a trial basis. We had a kind of learn basis and we extended that time at no additional charge, whatever. We don't pay anything up till now. You know, life is a for-profit company. They charge, use the ambulance, you pay. To extend that, we had a hunch based on watching their calls and kind of having an idea how the finances for that kind of deal work. For example, what they charged Fenville and part of the township for that same service, we thought, and and they've got the data to support it, that the call volume is insufficient to maintain the service at this level without somehow finding more revenue for them. The chief made a remark that they put a number on the table in the course of this discussion. And that number, my recollection of that number was coming year, $28,000. Chief said he was surprised there wasn't a zero in the end of it. That's what I wish he hadn't said. Hopefully, the fire and his people don't.
Oops.
Don't watch all our minutes or all our, I don't think they do. But in any case, that part that as it stands now, and that's not a done deal, but the inclination on the part of the fire board and part of the chief is to find a way to fund that within our existing revenue and budget. It's still, we will work toward an agreement, however, that if that's going to be the case, we need to specify for an extended period of time, the level of possible increase that that number could undergo. Because we don't want to start with that and then have somebody come back and say, I know what you need, $750,000. So that's an ongoing process and ongoing discussion. Next one, please, Jamie. On the .4 mil, you guys have all seen this, the school districts use it or whatever. This is roughly the amount tax constituents' tax bill would go up based on the tax value of their house. And again, even though the slash would indicate $40 per year, remember this is one year for that .4. Excellent, please. And that's it. So if you have any questions at all, it wasn't in my head. I think it's June 16th, the plan for the fire district to go for its public public meeting on the budget and then enacted following results of that meeting. So that's what I know on that. Any questions at all?
Go first, Dan.
I do. Yes, Madam Mayor. So in looking at this, you're not, were your revenue cover this? Are you looking at maybe having to go up a mileage?
Looking at maybe
Going up a mileage or is your request for revenue you're funded with what you have already, what's coming in?
Well, just like the city, some built in in terms of assessment, development, new development, new taxpayers, higher values on houses and whatever. There's a certain amount of built-in gain and that is covering the things I mentioned that are not part of the .4 mil. That .4 mil is strictly for those two things. And and whether the South Station comes to pass, which I certainly hope it does, but even if it doesn't, extending those two services, the four main, they come from two different directions. One's going to come under Blue Star Highway off of the township sewer line and the other from Maple Street all the way through that, those storage buildings behind the fire district. Having those in place increase, increases the value of the property fairly significantly. And that's our biggest asset, the physical property on Blue Star.
Thank you. Other questions?
I think you mentioned, thank you, I think you mentioned some of your past presentations that, you know, when you indicated the growth, growth is pretty significant, the number of EMS calls making, you know, the percentage of where the, you know, first responders are spending their time and effort. And I think you mentioned falls, falls is the number one.
Yes, and I did bring that chart in today, but same chart, same thing, falls top of the list of those calls.
So, I mean, I can't help but, I mean, looking at the numbers, 130, 130% over 20 years roughly. Anybody can do the math in their head. It's that
Probably not as well as you can.
3% year-over-year component, I guess. So that's just my thought process is, is there anything that can be done to try and
On the falls?
On whatever, right? If there are any safety issues at the city.
Well, the chief's big on what he continually refers to as a community risk reduction. And that kind of thing falls under. But basically what you're telling, trying to get the the population we're talking about is like my age or a little older or a little younger, actually. I'm a man done as well as I have. You're talking about hand bars in showers. You're talking about handrails on any, even a one-step decline. You're talking about providing older people with slippers. You're talking about getting throw rugs out of their houses because that's one of these. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that is not at all sexy and not, you know, you get to get it into people's heads. One of the, honestly, I mean, every, I don't know, you guys don't, maybe, I don't, I'm not going to say, I know my age.
Oh, thanks.
It's very tough to, it's very tough to leave behind. I don't get on stairs unless I'm holding on, you know, up to a point. It never even occurred to me. I just, I bound upstairs and bound down them. Now, man, and same thing in the shower. I don't, in the, not that you need to know my shower habits, but in the shower, in the shower, I never don't have a handhold on some, on a, on the faucet handle, on the bar that's in there to hold on. There's two faucets. So when I turn, never take both hands off of that. I'm drop feet on my feet and you start to lose this or whatever. And I've taken three, three falls along 15 years ago and done things to avoid that. But it kind of comes. And I wish there was a simple answer saying, well, if we could just get people to, but a lot of them only get there when they fall. I mean,
The number of falls are going up. So is it a reasonable assumption that that
Falls are going up?
Well, is a reasonable assumption that at least that it corresponds to
Age?
Is it, is it, is our age demographic changing or are more people coming into the town or is it?
Well, in terms of a specific area of falls, the belief is that the age demographic, which is, you guys know for the city.
Has it gotten older over the last 20 years?
Absolutely, absolutely. For residents, you know, less so for the, less so for the tourist population.
I'm just looking that up right now.
130% was relating to something specific, whether there's
I'd have to look back to the I'd have to look back to the the older data for, just for the population growth within the three jurisdictions. Forget about the but there, that has been a growth number as well. I don't know that it would take up all of that, but that that and the possibility or the likelihood of old, an older population.
Well, I haven't gotten older the last 20 years.
Where do I get my slippers?
Pardon me? What'd you say?
Where do we get our slippers?
Seriously. Well, you want to go door-to-door with me? We'll sell them. We'll tell them it's a charity thing.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, Gregor, you're up with inner urban.
We have started our, well, since, since the first of May, we started our service over to Lake Town Township, Fenville and our little wine tours that we do to our wineries. We acquired, already, we're not at the end of the month yet, but so far we've increased 314 riders from Lake Town Township. So that was, that was quite an, you know, increase in our overall ridership that so far we're at 600, 600 more riders than usual this time of year. So we're just increasing. It just keeps getting bigger. We didn't get the numbers on the Fenville. I just had my meeting this afternoon, right before this meeting. And then, but, but wanted to say that it obviously is making a big difference, 314 riders and just in the last three weeks. So and so we see that there is that need for, by, by our next meeting, we're finally going to get the plans for our meeting. I've been talking about that for a year, that we're expanding the building. But we're finally going to get our plans for our expansion there. And we talked about at today's meeting about repaving and other improvements that we want to make to the building as well to accommodate, to accommodate our growth. We also had, had a small increase to our insurance policy for our employees. They were only paying, believe it or not, They were only paying, believe it or not, this is unheard of, uh, four point five percent of their premiums. Um, and, uh, and, uh, they're going up to nine percent. All of our employees were happy with that. And it'll probably have to go up a little bit more, but, um, but, uh, but, uh, just want to let you know that. But, uh, other than that, everything's going great. Hey, uh, don't forget to use that high school. I feel like a broken record. But I mean, you know, people talk about parking in town. There are so many places you can park and take that inner urban, not just, you know, not just over at the high school, but in Douglas, when Douglas isn't having a big busy day in downtown or lots of other areas. You can park your car and take the inner urban in. So folks that keep complaining about parking in Sagatuck, utilize the inner urban.
Is the signage up for the, uh, high school lot?
The high school lot will start at the, uh, last week. Is it the third or last week of June? And will continue throughout the summer and then.
Last day of school is the sixth.
Yeah. And, and so, uh, and those signs will be up at that time. Yeah.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions? Okay, Joe Callick.
Yeah, um, first state that I think I said this before, I hate following you. Maybe we'll reverse.
Yeah, we can, you know, yeah.
Mix it up a little bit. Um, Ryan, I was not aware of the billing issue. It didn't come up in our meeting, so presumably it was discovered afterwards. So thanks for bringing it up. Um, I'll circle back with Daryl. Uh, not a lot to report. Uh, April wastewater monthly operating report was submitted. That's, um, state regulation for testing around our sewage treatment plant. So that was, that was fine. Uh, hydrogen, hydrant flushing and the flow testing completed late April. Um, minimal complaints of dirty water. I think a lot of that's how they schedule things to try and get the minimum, you know, before the season hits. Um, out of the five hundred eighty-seven hydrants that were flushed, seventeen required some, you know, fixes, mechanical repairs. And they're all up and fully functioning right now. Uh, I think they were, Calick was impacted by the power outage, just like everyone else. Um, as far as Sagatuck goes, a lot of the sewer pumping stations, uh, were without power. So they had crews rotating portable generators. Um, there were some extended downtime, I think up by U-Haul as a matter of fact. Uh, however, there's been no reported, you know, residential backups from the sewer system. So kind of dodged a bullet there. Uh, otherwise, water sampling took place on May fourteenth for uh, EPA's unregulated contaminant rule. Uh, the Douglas well site reported, you know, minor PFAS, uh, readings well, well below any kind of level of concern. In fact, was right, if anything, right at the threshold of what's even detectable. So very low, no concerns. Uh, and other than that, uh, expecting audit results for fiscal year twenty twenty-five at the June meeting. So hopefully I'll be able to present those once we, uh, once we get them.
Great. Thank you.
Good job, Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a, I have a set of.
Water, yeah, water. So interesting, Joe. We appreciate that. Uh, Chris, anything on the harbor authority?
Not, not much new. Uh, again, we have the next month, the meeting with Edgewater to go with Greg Wykamp to go through, um, the new, um, looking at the, the role of the harbor authority. And I think we're still doing the surveys on the No Wake. They have a count on it and he wanted, he said, when I talked to, um, um, why I'm just name, the township manager.
Daniel, yeah.
Daniel, yeah. He said that you, you and the others were going to talk about when to cut that off. Did you make a decision on that? If we're going to give a final date or going to send out another notice to, to vote?
We have not. Uh, his update on May sixteenth had, we'd received just, yeah, a little over six hundred and fifty survey participants.
Which seemed pretty good. Yeah. So maybe you guys could make the decision and just kind of do a hard stop, but let people know when that is. Get our final count and then we'll move.
Yeah, we could probably put out one last, hey, we're going to close it on this date. Yeah, I'll follow up.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, ZBA, Brian, anything we need to know about with that?
Nope.
Okay.
No updates.
Uh, historic district grocery's gone, uh, planning commission.
Again, um, really just three, three topics I'll touch on when it's the master plan. Uh, I think everyone knows this, but Douglas and the township have pretty much gone the independent route. So that's what Sagatuck will be doing, uh, much to the disappointment, I think, of the entire planning commission. However, we are going to proceed under the premise that, uh, you know, maybe with some common ground, there may be an opportunity to kind of merge the plans and revisit having a tri-community plan. I'm sure we're going to find a lot, you know, that's, that's, that's common across our, our three communities. Um, obviously, you know, as we kick off the development of the master plan, we're looking to solicit a lot of input from our community. So we've discussed and the expectation is that we're going to have multiple, you know, input sources from surveys, pop-up events, at least one special meeting, whether we'll hold that at the high school or not yet. That's to be, to be determined. But we're going to try and get those gunning, going fairly quickly, uh, as early as, uh, as July timeframe. Uh, let's see, what else? Sign regulations, uh, is again, probably we touched on this before. The Supreme Court requires that we can't base zoning regulations on the content. Uh, they consider it discriminatory. So we continue to look at evaluating our current regulations. Um, right now we're looking at, um, you know, pretty much having broad categories of signs, like for example, yard signs will kind of encompass everything that can go into a yard, whether there's political signs or real estate signs, or there may be some carve out for construction signs because sometimes those are larger. Um, but that way they'll just be a one generic regulation of, if you will, right, that'll determine the, the size and how long the signs can be upsworn and so forth. So, um, working on that, continue to work on that and hopefully have something resolved in the next meeting or two. And then we're also kind of work in progress on simplifying our zoning map by merging multiple zones. Um, so right now we've gone through an exercise of kind of looking at the commonality across the different zones to kind of pick off, you know, with some no brainers. If we have ninety percent, you know, across three zones, you know, can we look at that remaining ten percent and kind of shrink it down and try and find some, some common ground and collaboration without impacting any of the property. So that's work in progress and we'll continue to update uh, councils as we go forward. And that's it for, for planning.
Great. Thanks, Joe.
Just, uh, yeah. I'm really pleased to hear that even if the three communities are kind of doing their own plans, that there's already an appetite to sit, sit back down when everyone's done and look for common ground areas where we can cooperate. So I think that's a great, great idea.
Yeah, agreed. I'm really bummed that we aren't doing that now, but hopefully we can get to that at some point.
Yeah. So all the planning, uh, commissioners right now are reviewing because I think, uh, both Douglas has finalized. There's, if I'm not mistaken, and the township is, is, they haven't finalized, but they're close. So we're kind of looking through, you know, their master plans right now. You know, everybody's doing markups, right, to try and find that commonality. So our, our vision is we're going to a place where hopefully we can drive those three into a one.
That's great. So, thanks. Any other questions, Churchill? All right, Parks and Public Works.
Yeah. So, um, we met this morning. Um, we focused on three of the council's main priorities, um, as far as, um, a priority list that we came up with in the strategic plan. So three of the things that we worked on today, uh, Mount Bald Head vegetation, invasive species and wayfinding and signage. Um, Scott Herbert spoke with the Alleghan Conservation District, who will be doing an evaluation on the Mount Bald Head vegetation. The good news is they've already indicated that it does not appear to have active erosion, even though you kind of look at it and it looks pretty, uh, mangy there, uh, occasion. Um, it, it doesn't appear to be, um, having active erosion that we have to worry about. But the good news is they will be doing an assessment of that and they'll be coming back to us with recommendations on some vegetation, some plantings that they would recommend. So that's in the hands of the Alleghan Conservation District right now. Um, we also worked on invasive species. Obviously there are a number of projects underway like the mill foil, um, treatment. But in addition to that, um, information has been given to our city clerk, to Jamie, um, to create a landing page on the city website. So residents will have recommendations on what to do with invasive plants in your yard. Um, so, you know, just some informational things that people can go to it and say, I don't know what to do with mustard weed. How do I get rid of it? Um, I know it's not great to have and it's not great to multiply in my backyard, but how do I get rid of it? And so there's going to be a landing page on our website that will just help with some of those things. Again, it was a city council priority to have that, um, updated and working on that. Um, and then we talked about wayfinding and signage. Um, as you know, the city plans to have a whole new refresh and branding of our signage. Um, so that's something we'll be, you know, helping with as we get to that. Um, hopefully we can come up with some things that we can make recommendations down the road. But there was some discussion about the Sagatuck Harbor natural area. Um, obviously there's funding there. Um, and we already have recommendations from the West Michigan Land Conservancy, um, just about some pretty minimal signage as far as trying to get people to go off from pathways that they shouldn't be on, you know, trampling in areas that are protected areas and they should try to stay on paths that have been designated. Um, again, West Michigan Land Conservancy said that there's some areas that we need signage. And we said, maybe we should do that before we get through the whole rebranding and stuff. It's more of a, you know, immediate need to kind of protect that area. So again, there's funding already there. We already have recommendations where the signs need to go. And we just need to, you know, possibly move forward with that if we could do that sooner than the whole rebrand. So same thing with that Sagatuck sign, you know, there's some immediate needs that we might, you know, if that's something we could do, we hope that we can do that. And then we had a number of other reports that individual, um, Parks and Public Works committee members just kind of worked on. Um, but because they're not council priorities, they're just research at this point.
You know, there's an interesting tie between the signage and invasive species. One of the, in, um, the state park, the biggest, one of the biggest causes of invasive species, you know, proliferation is hikers taking off paths.
Right.
And you take those little things and you move them around. So it is good to get people on the main paths.
Yeah.
So, Adam.
You know, all, all, you know, that I was very supportive of the staff person for DPW. I got a little concerned when I read the minutes of the past, um, Park and Public Works minutes. There's a long list of projects. Uh, Ryan has assured me, uh, that Scott and the DPW are very clear on what their duties are and that this new person will be working on that. So I guess where I'm at, and you kind of got us into it a little bit, are these projects. Um, we can't just say go forth and do good. You know, I think that I would like, I would request that on these different projects, the restoration invasive species, signage, streetscaping, property acquisition, that we spend a workshop on those, because if you look at the minutes, there's a lot of discussion about, do we get the public involved? Do we go out and, and we hire consultant for this? What are the extensive? I don't want us too far down the road before we decide that maybe the, the city council doesn't want to do that.
Sure.
So, and it could be just you, it could be your committee chair, but just so that you're available to say, because these have already been assigned out, if I'm right. All of these projects have been assigned.
So not necessarily. They were just discussion items today.
But one person was put in charge in each, of each one of these.
So for example, um, I took up streetscaping because I have an interest in that because of downtown businesses and that sort of thing. So I basically wrote up just kind of a list of what things we need to be looking for as far as streetscaping going forward. And we know, we talked about it today. It's like, um, when we need to replace lead service lines, when there's like stormwater, um, repairs that need to be done and Butler Street needs to be redone, that's when we'll take up streetscaping because we don't want to tear up all of that. That would be the best time to do that. But if you do a little of the research now and have some things and ideas ready to go, it'll just go quicker once, you know, we get the green light to go ahead and tear up Butler Street like, you know, three, five, six years down the road, whatever it might be. So just a little, you know, we're just doing research on things that, you know, could come up later on.
And you, you, I, I read the minutes as well and, and as well as Kelly Roach and other folks that are taking on some of these duties just to make sure that you're not taking our employees away from duties that they should be doing.
Absolutely. These are, it's a list of things that, um, we can't have staff work on.
Right.
Because it hasn't been approved to do so.
Right.
But there are ideas that we're like, okay, down the line, maybe we can do some of this research ahead of time.
That's what I thought.
Um, and, and they're also a little, you know, I would say pet projects for the individual who, who's a part of PPW that, you know, I said, hey, listen, this is not a council priority, but if you want to work with the library on some educational things, um, by all means, the PPW can take those things on. Um, and, you know, maybe work with the library on educating people on, you know, pocket prairies and things that, um, are of interest to people on the committee. So.
And it would show that that was, uh, a city of, the city of Sagatuck plan. Uh, you're going to put Park and Public Works people in connection with the library to look at different things. And, and they're going to say that they're from the Park and Public Works. It's going to give the assumption that this is hooked into the city in some way.
I think it was more just like, um, working on things that are good for the environment in general. So they were just ideas.
Isn't that more brainstorming kind of thing?
Thing and thoughts on, you know, instead of, you know, just making sure we have native plants that, you know, are encouraging our residents to plant native plants and also plant things that, um, bring in bees and bring in insects and do those things. It's more educational. And, you know, it doesn't take up staff time and it's not anything that we're asking, you know, anybody else to work on. But I think educating our residents is just helpful. And I think as a Parks and Public Works person, I feel like that's kind of our, our job to do those things when we can. When we don't have other things that the city has asked us to work on or the city council has asked us to work on.
And I guess I go back to the whole issue of who directs things. And I know that the whole charter for the, uh, Park and Public Works was created to kind of give the permission to move forward. But in looking at these things, I, I still think that the city council needs to be briefed on what, because looking at some of them, it's going to develop a comprehensive trail and signage plan, create signs, create uniform downtown standards, create maintenance standards. All of those are things that are going to require long discussion. I'd like to hear from the Park and Public Works Committee, what they're planning on doing before they go out and start it. I think that would be the responsibility of city council to know what's going on. So that's why I'm asking at one of our coming workshops, especially with the signage that you said, um, is a priority.
So the wayfinding and signage was a priority that we identified because, um, downtown business owners were asking us to have better signage and that sort of thing. But like I said, it's something that it's going to take a little bit before we get to the whole rebrand thing. And if, you know, um, it's a priority, if it's something that, um, you know, city council wants us to help with, get some ideas, some recommendations. And then like we did with, um, what was the most recent thing? Um, oh, just the naming of the airport property. Here are four examples, and these were our top things that came from Parks and Public Works. These are only recommendations and then city council decides from there. So like from, uh, wayfinding and signage, maybe we do a little research. We do the things, we come up, we brainstorm, we do different things, we get, get different bids. And then we give you our recommendations and then it's city council's final decision.
And agree, again, I, I don't agree with that, with you going out to get bids for something for signage.
I'm not getting a bid. The city manager would be getting bids.
My point is, is that the city council should be the ones to decide if there are bids going out.
Well, sure.
I think we would.
We would.
Yeah, we would at that point.
But then we would look through them and say, hey, like, these are our recommendations because we take, you know, it's just, we're more, um, specific where we can work on those things. Um, just like planning commission, you, you work more specifically with the zoning and the, you know, every, and you guys dive into it, right? So that's Parks and Public Works. We dive into it and then we give recommendations, just like planning, you dive into it, you give recommendations to city council.
Planning is, is pretty much set by ordinances and statutory duties. The Park and Public Works is kind of a new conglomeration of different things. And so that's again, why I'm asking at a workshop that we go through these different things and get the idea of what you're planning on doing, because there was a lot of, uh, developed, developed.
Which, which agenda are you looking at?
I'm looking right off what you had, the Mount Bald Head.
Today?
No, from, no, yes, this is from the minutes that have already been written, have already occurred.
So the last meeting.
Yes, the last meeting.
Okay.
So the Mount Bald Head Vegetation Restoration, Scott's to reach out to conserv- conservation groups, create a city website. Jamie apparently is already doing that. Um, there is a personal guy, professional guidance to create an effective targeted approach to manage the invasive species. Signage priority, clear strategic sign, signage. I would just like to have them here so that we can go through those and ask them questions a little more clearly to see what they're planning on doing.
I guess I, I would say that, you know, for the vegeta, the restoration vegetation restoration, I mean, that's Scott's job. So he's like, I, I don't know why council would be involved in that. Same with the website.
We've already, we had the Alleghan Conservation District is working on that.
And, and who suggested that?
Scott. Talk to them. If you want to go ahead and go up, Scott?
No, I, let me be real clear. I'm not saying any of this is bad at all. What I'm saying is, is to find out about it, reading the minutes of a past committee meeting. I think it's a city council person and maybe you all do, maybe you're completely, uh, comfortable with that. I'm not. I want to know what's going on. And I want to know where you're drafting this going.
That's my job is to update you. And so that's what I was working on at this point. I felt like that was a pretty good report. I, I, I'm not sure what more you wanted from, um,
I would like to know when you look at the minutes, when people were assigned to different things, the long-term plans for these, which streetscaping, create a uniform downtown standards, create maintenance standards. Look at other towns, long-term approach, consult with St. Clair. All of these are action things that you're proposing.
Discussion, yeah, that was just part of the discussion.
Okay, part of the discussion. So then who's going to say you can go forward with that?
Council.
Council.
It, my point, exactly. So when will that come to us?
When it, when it gets to, I mean, it's not a priority. So for them to spend time on anything, I mean, kind of going back to our meeting in January, we talk about sort of what council's priorities are, the what and the why. And in that, we had invasive species as one, the wayfinding was one, the Mount Balded registration was one. So council approved it. It's on our priorities list. And then the how goes to staff. Some, in some cases, the PPW might do some legwork and discussion on that. But, you know, if they're bids or if they're, you know, if they're big decision.
That all comes to city council.
Yeah. But for us to, I guess, like, I, council shouldn't be weighing in on website copy or.
Council should be weighing in on a website that's under the city council, under the city of Sagatuck.
It's only a, it's only a landing page from our current website.
It could be, you could be giving us the winning numbers for the next lottery. It still should have been approved by council. And I realize that you're the, you're the, um, website person is responsible for that. But you're also responsible for city hall. If you want to paint something, then you got to come to the council. My question on this is, and, and, you know, every, you don't have to agree. Just saying is if we're going to put something on the city website, I think the, the city council should at least have seen it.
You don't have to come to council and paint, paint stuff. I mean, we don't, have we ever approved? I mean, he's, the staff's job is to run the policies that, and priorities that council chooses. But then they go do it. I mean, for short-term rentals, we said, we're going to do short-term rentals. We passed an ordinance, then there was all sorts of stuff that had to be done to affect that. Council didn't sign off on that, that was staff's job.
You've got the votes, I disagree. So if I can't get the recommendations to go to a workshop, then I'll just maybe meet with Lauren and get the down-to-dirty details there.
Okay, I mean, it's our, it's our charter, Chris. I mean, do we need to like do a, I mean, I could see doing a, if we need to do a workshop on our charter and whose responsibilities are what? I mean.
That would be great, too.
Well, Mayor, I'm, I'm a bit confused because, I, I mean, all of the substantive things that the Parks and Public Works Committee are working on, were an outgrowth of us looking at the community survey and coming up with, with priorities at our strategic planning session. So.
Yeah.
I, I guess I, I'm, I'm extremely comfortable because I had significant input as a council member during our strategic planning session. I, I do not get the impression that, that I'm not going to put words in anyone's mouth that Parks and Public Works is ignoring us and just going off and doing their own thing. I, I don't, I, I'm not sensing that. I, I'm sensing them bringing back things that are a little bit more fully baked, not completely baked, because to be completely baked needs funding in which comes to this body. But I do feel like they are getting direction and they are following that direction. I, I, I'm not getting the impression that they're kind of going rogue in any way.
Yeah, what I've, what I've encouraged every, you know, committee member is that, you know, there's things that we can be passionate about and, and think about for, for the future. But you can't use staff time and there's no city funding for it. But that doesn't mean you can't be passionate about it and volunteer to do certain things in our community and also help educate, you know, our residents. So really, those are, you know, the things that we don't have funding for, that aren't a council priority. Those are things that are just being, you know, worked on individually. And if we didn't do that, I mean, they're just things that people are passionate about, about volunteering in our area.
And, and if I could ask just one more question of the mayor pro temp. I mean, and is it clear to the Parks and Public Works Committee that they should be following our council manager form of governance? And if they do have ideas, they should not be going.
Oh, yeah.
To staff, other than the manager.
Oh, absolutely.
So they're clear on that?
Yes, absolutely. And they're very, very clear on the council priorities. We've been very clear on that. Scott and I have been working with them on all of that. And then the other things are just discussion items that are, you know, of interest. You know, the Dark Sky Initiative, we talked about that.
And, and I, and I have to say that, I'm sorry, the, the, the way the minutes were put together, it, it did look a little bit like there were directives. And, 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 and hearing what I heard, that they're going to follow what we follow. They, they were not making directives, right, to our staff. They're not adding unless it, unless we're aware and it's something that we all agree upon. And so that's, that answered my question, I'm happy with that.
Dark Sky is a really good example. And it's actually why I love our, our PPW committee. So, you know, I know Nancy Kimball, and I don't know if she was the one that.
It was Judy, actually.
Judy, so, um, and, um, council got really excited about that idea. I mean, and, you know, we talked about it here. And I said, you know, great idea, it's not a priority. And actually, one of the reasons why we're, you know, revisit our priorities in a bit is because we've had some things come up that are really good. Russ was talking about Hoffman Street. And it's like, okay, Hoffman Street's a mess. Dark Sky's a great idea. It's not on our priorities list, so let's revisit. If it doesn't make it this year, we know that something has bubbled up. Whether it's, you know, from one council member driving on a ratty road or somebody else wanting my neighborhood to be darker, which I think is a brilliant idea. But for us to consider, you know, next year or the following year, so.
And so like Judy put together a whole thing. The township already has an ordinance on the Dark Sky Initiative. And so Judy grabbed all of that and said, hey, you know, these are things that, you know, down the road, if this is something we want to consider, there's already something, you know, here in the township. How would we do it here in town, things to consider? And, um, you know, we, we talked about maybe that's an educational thing that could be, you know, again, on a landing page that we would just have stuff that we can give to Jamie that would just go as a landing page on our website. It's just recommendations and that sort of thing.
No, you've, you've, you've helped me a lot. Because when I read the minutes, it was, these have all been assigned out. Scott will reach out here, Scott will do this, Scott will do that. And I thought, why are we getting another staff person? Let's just not do that. And then Scott will have time for D. You've, you've answered a lot of my concerns, not all of them, but I'll meet with you about that.
Start then. That sounds great.
Okay.
If I may, just to kind of make it back to things that I think are more nuts and bolts and, and do involve staff time, unfortunately. I, I, since, since the mayor pro temp mentioned, um, Mount Balded. You know, we, we've got Renee Zeta's correspondence in our packet. Her comments, I think, are, are correct. Uh, I've, I've been there, I was there today. I think winter was really hard on some of the treads on the stairs. And I, you know, we are getting into a high-traffic period. So once again, I, you know, I, I'm assuming that this is just parts, part and parcel of DPW's normal maintenance protocol. But yeah, I think, I, I just want to know that we're talking about Mount Balded. That I think Ms. Zeta's observations were, were, were correct. And probably things are a little bit worse on some of those treads than, than maybe some of us have. And, you know, we have, some of us haven't been out there a while. So I, I can only start, I've only recently started.
I was just going to say, you have a new hip, I don't need, uh, new, new.
Oh, I got three rounds today, so I'm quite pleased with myself. So, yeah.
Good, anything else? That was a good discussion, thank you. Yeah, Tri-Community.
Oh, yeah.
Motorized.
That would be neat. Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a very good Tri-Community meeting with the tribes. Manager was there with his counterparts from the Tri-Community area. We had very good attendance. A lot of folks from, from the other municipalities were, were, were there. And I, I really felt like it was a very good and respectful meeting. I think everyone understands the tribe's role, you know, as a sovereign government. And it was also good that we had the representative from MDOT, at least, on the Zoom call to, to hear everyone's thoughts. And also the good, good participation from Friends of the Three Star Trail at that meeting. So everyone's continuing to talk. It's, you know, it's, it's going to require some patience. But I think, you know, everyone, I think, is, remains very much committed to the project.
Great.
So.
Uh, Joe, Water System Operations Contract.
Pardon me?
That's a catchy name. I was just saying.
We have a new draft, just haven't had a chance to review it yet. But thank you, Ryan, for bird dogging that. I know it's been a challenge, but, um, we're looking to get together in the next couple of weeks to go over the, the next draft.
Great. And Scott, back to you with wildlife management.
Thank you, Mayor. We hopefully, as Sagatuck, the manager, myself, um, the lawyers, and hopefully Sergeant Hoss from the, from the county will, will be meeting, hopefully, if, if not this week, next week, to kind of discuss what some ordinances could look like for, for Sagatuck. There, there has been a bit of a divergence among the Tri-Community players, if you will. Although I think we made tremendous progress in that, you know, in, in these communities, which, you know, we, we all love wildlife and we love the environment here. But I think the fact that everyone has come to agreement that we need to start to employ lethal means to, to control the herd, particularly after seeing the drone footage, which I, which I think the manager may have shared with you all. You know, within the course of one hour, uh, they were able to count over 103 deer in a very small area around, uh, around the Christian Neighbors Church and, and Wiley Street. So there is a, quite a large herd, kind of mostly on that side of the river, kind of a little bit on Douglas' side. But they certainly have access all the way to Oxbow if they want to, and they, they do range around a bit. So I think that the divergence, though, is, I think Douglas is heading in a direction, probably because they, they have done a call before and they have their own in-house police force. I think they want to have a bit more prescriptive, more kind of bespoke set of ordinances for themselves. Whereas myself and my two colleagues from the city of Sagatuck on the committee, we're concerned about the liability if we deviate from state hunting rules for, for hunting on private land. We're not sure that our contract with the Sheriff's Department creates the bandwidth for the sheriff's office to kind of oversee this type of activity. Although I'm sure Sergeant Hoss will tell us, his deputies have a lot of experience dealing with hunters because of their, of their coverage area. But we found sort of Douglas' approach potentially can, um, create a lot of extra work for staff, for one thing. Because it creates a lot of questions, because, you know, it's quite clear if you're like, okay, I can hunt on my private land. I just have to follow state rules. Whereas I want to hunt on my private land, but I want to look at this homeowner's guideline that, that Douglas is putting together. Our, our, our side of it, after the Sagatuck side sees these more as something like a template, things to think about. But we really want folks to be governed by state DNR regulations. I think it's much cleaner for us and safer for us from a legal standpoint. And I'll be very excited to hear Mr. Whitty and, and Mr. Patterson's viewpoints on this as we, as we meet maybe this week or next. And then, of course, Sergeant Hassan, I think, has experience on, you know, safety issues and, you know, what we could expect if we allow hunting on some private land in certain zones. So those are some things we'll be talking about as a, as a smaller group. And then we'll hopefully be bringing ordinances before this council.
Is it, um, is doing a call on the west, on the peninsula, um, on the table?
It is. It, I think, I think it should be. I think, I think it should be considered. I think.
So many.
I think, yeah, you're right, Mayor. And I, I think we should consider talking with the township in Douglas about perhaps pooling resources. You know, the deer don't have.
Right.
Addresses.
And thank God they can't call the interurban.
They cannot use interurban, yes. Please make it, no, 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 no special rates for deer.
Oh, man.
Consider, given that area, that old orchard behind Christian Neighbors is barely isolated in some ways, isolated, but it's not heavily populated.
Right.
There seems to be a very significant concentration of deer there that might, um, it might make sense to quickly move during the summer or pre-hunting season, a call that maybe we should, we share the, we share the cost in with it, with our, with our neighbors. Because I think that could maybe create a, a kind of first step. But, you know, once again, I told this council before, and this L DNR has told me that, um, you know, handling invasive, handling deer is like handling invasive species, although they're native, of course. You know, culling cannot be done once and then you're, you're done. Culling would have to become, you know, a yearly activity, which is why we think the pressure of hunting, the kind of reconditioning these animals to understand that they are not, not in a preserve, you know, they are prey, that might start to change their behavior. So, um, but I, I think that might be a, a useful discussion to consider with our neighbors. Now that we're getting some, in addition to the anecdotal data, we all know what we see.
Right.
Particularly as, as, you know, you residing on the other side.
Yeah, there's a big pocket kind of behind Sherwood.
Exactly.
Between, you know, off of Campbell. And then, uh, yeah.
And the, and the, and the, um, the drone, um, footage clearly shows what everyone has anecdotally, you know, shared, that there is a massive herd that seems to be congregating in that old orchard area. So I think that might be useful. You know, once again, instead of coming to the councils, all, all, and the, and the Dan Douglas to say, if, if it's going to be $50,000 worth of culling, you know, what, how's that going to get dibbed up? You know, and, and my belief is it will benefit all because the, the deer can range around a fair amount. But it's, you know, it's not cheap. The, the last I heard, and this is just, this is very much hearsay, but, you know, for professional sharpshooters from USDA, operating at night with silenced rifles and frangible ammunition, you know, it's $300 an animal. So it's not cheap. So 100, 100 animals, think about it. I mean, yeah. But I think it is something to be considered. I mean, it might, it might be a shock to the system. I don't think we'd have, um, too much pushback from hunters that want to volunteer their services because the sharpshooters target the does. Because, you know, once again, don't want to get too gruesome here, but, you know, if you target a doe, you may get a doe anaphon. You know, so, you know, um, you know, that's sort of how they target.
I think you should do males first.
I just, I don't. I think you probably have some agreement on that, but.
That's advanced thinking there, for sure. Oh, let's kill the women.
I, I will, I will say real quick, um, I haven't seen them downtown a whole lot the last few weeks. So that's good. We haven't seen Janet. No reportings of what, they've named her as Janet. And I, I know there were some concerned citizens that reached out to us about, about, you know, spreading disease and making sure that, you know, in the parks and all that for the kids and ticks and all that. But I don't know where Janet went, but I'm glad she's gone.
Yes, when we drove down Lakeshore today, a doe had just given birth, apparently, to a fawn. And she was gaunt, two ribs were just sticking out. And the fawn, I've never, I didn't know babies cried like that. And it could hardly get up and walk. And so we stood, we didn't want to touch it. And there were cars, there were no cars, so we just waited for a while and it finally got up on its feet and toddled off into the, to the woods, but.
It's, we have, it's a problem.
And it's a problem for the, you know, it's not just a problem with us, it's a problem to them, the deer themselves.
It's, it's, that's what I imagine. It's, they're starving.
Their, their, their population could self-correct and crash, but that's a very, I mean, that, that, that's a very painful way. And then, of course, there is the disease component when they become so close together, so packed together, because they're, they're, they're not feeling any pressure. That's, that, that's easy for disease vectors to travel among them. So there's, there's a number of reasons why, you know, because, you know, we've changed this, we've changed their habitat. We've taken away all the other natural predators, for the most part. You know, the, the responsibility, you know, falls, falls to us in, in many ways.
Okay, approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $72,459.71.
I'll second it.
Any questions, discussion, roll call, vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, no public hearings or unfinished business, which takes us to new business, 14A, the fire department budget for the next fiscal year. I don't know what page. I apologize, it looks like I forgot page number. It's good for the.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Thank you. Page 31.
Yeah, I don't think the fire department provided one, but.
Is, are we looking for a motion, Ryan? Yes. Okay, um, I'm motion to approve the, uh, the Sagatuck Township Fire District Fire Department Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026.
Second. Any discussion before we vote?
Just, uh, thank you for the explanation and, and your, uh, constant, uh, communication with us, Dan.
Yes. And Dan, I guess the only question I, I assume residents want to know is the .4 mil increase. How much will that increase the average homeowner in Sagatuck? Is, is that a number that?
I think it's forty, forty bucks for one hundred thousand taxable value.
Okay. I just assumed people would want to know that, so.
Right, sure. How much more money to save for their taxes, yeah.
And that it's a one-time thing too. That's important.
Yeah, I think that will be important in the messaging.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll amend the motion, Mary. Uh, motion to adopt the Sagatuck Township Fire District Fire Department Budget for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it again. All right, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that takes us to Mr. Herbert and the front end loader replacement on page fifty of our packet.
Hey, good evening. Uh, yeah, we, we discussed this at length at a, at a workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago, if you want. Um, I can just hit the highlight points, but we're, we're currently operating a nineteen ninety-nine CAT nine thirty-eight G, which is a very critical piece of equipment for us as we are reminded of that during the storm event that we had. So it's got nine thousand plus operation hours on it and it's getting a little bit tired. So, um, given that it's a, a key piece of, uh, equipment for us to keep, uh, service levels stable, we're recommending the replacement of it. So before we use a motion, if you.
May. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of one Caterpillar nine-three-eight wheel loader from Michigan CAT in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to the state's My Deal Purchasing Program.
I will second it.
Great. We did talk about this, but any other questions or comments before we vote?
It's not easy to spend that much money, but, um, it's assuring knowing that, um, it's going in good hands and, uh, and it's, and how much it's needed. Again, um, I think that storm was just proof of how much, uh, we utilize vehicles like that in our, uh, in our DPW.
Yeah, and I'd just like to call out that nine thousand hours on a piece of equipment like that, I mean, that's, you're getting up towards the end of life for the engine major on a, what, thirty-four oh six and that is probably around seventy-five thousand dollars. So, I mean, this, it's a no-brainer.
We're, we're at a point where, you know, if we would, if we did want to sell it, you know, kind of went along with it a little bit further. We're at the point where a lot of the bushings and seals and whatnot would have to be replaced. And we did get a quote, um, you know, months back prior to investigating the replacement of it. And we're looking at twenty thousand dollar plus service bills at this point.
Yeah.
And that's something major doesn't go bad.
Yeah.
All right, let's take a vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Scott. Um, updates to personnel policies manual. Um, Brian, you wanna? Give us a brief one. Pardon? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We, uh, you, uh, reviewed for your, your workshop meeting. There was some discussion about the, um, remote and hybrid work, uh, policy. And then, uh, there was a desire for, um, a change to, um, section one point one, where it relates to complaints that, that might be made about, uh, the city manager and, and who those should be, uh, made to. So, uh, the consensus at the, the workshop was, uh, no changes to the, uh, uh, remote and hybrid work policy. We did add in that complaints about the city manager would be made to the mayor and Mayor Pro Tempul. Then we'll confer with the city attorney. Otherwise, there were no requested, uh, changes and everything else is the same.
Great.
Mayor.
Oh, yep.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the updated Personnel Policies Manual.
Second.
Uh, questions, comments, Chris?
Yes, um, I think when we had our meeting and discussed all of this, were a variety of reasons why staff would maybe need to work at home. And I think those were all excellent. I trust Ryan's discretion on how, how this will be done. Because I know there might be the expectation from the public that we'll, the, the staff will be available nine to five every day. But I'm pretty sure that the concerns will come quickly. So I think we move forward and if it starts to have a little tear somewhere in the fabric, then we'll address that, but I'm good with it.
Thanks for that. Anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to administrative project coordinator position, which we also discussed at the workshop. And that's.
Way down there.
One seventy-eight.
Thank you, one seventy-eight.
Yeah, I'm really booked down.
You said one seventy-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Personnel manual was hefty.
Yes, it was.
It was a beast.
Thank you all for your work. I'm reading through all those.
Yeah, that was a beast. I will as soon as.
Trying to get there.
Uh, one, bottom of one seventy-nine.
I'm not there yet.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the job description in addition of a full-time administrative project coordinator for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Uh, questions, discussions, Chris?
Um, again, I want to, uh, thank Lauren and Ryan for helping me understand, uh, a little bit better how the Plant Parks and Public Works Committee works. I'm not there yet, not there all the way yet, but, uh, I think I can look forward to having more in-depth discussions. I was very tickled to see that we were going to have, uh, a second person help, another person helping Scott. And I appreciate the fact that, uh, Ryan has assured me that that won't have anything to do with Park and Public Works. One of the things I would say is that now with this extra person, I think we should be able to find it since it's essential to support our businesses that maybe the next time we have somebody that needs concrete blocks put up for a parade, uh, we'd be able to help them with that.
So point on that, and I think you weren't at that meeting. Council voted no on that. We did talk about it, um, just so we didn't think that that was a job for the city to do. We do it at some of the bigger events, but to not get into the business of barricade.
Okay, so then, um, that presents for me then a, a, we need maybe work on the definition because my understanding is when we had the consent agenda to allow the Sagatuck Center for the Arts to have the farmers markets there. She thanked the DPW for putting concrete blocks out before and for doing it again. So different, different thing.
So to my knowledge, there's no concrete barriers that are provided to, um, Sagatuck Center for the Arts for their events. There's blocking of, um, you know, the parking lot, so folks can't enter in with, uh, my, some sawhorse barricades. But there's not any actual concrete barriers that we place there.
Do you know what she's talking about when Kristen said that she supported, she thanked the DPW for putting up the? What?
Yeah, when they, when they block off, when they're, they kind of use the city, the Culver Street parking lot as an overflow lot for their, their farmer's market. And so when that happens, then they ask us to put out our, you know, those little A-frame, um, like, I call them sawhorse barricades. Um, but they're like a little A-frame barricade with, um, like a two-by-eight, uh, board with reflective tape on it. So, uh, we, we put no parking signs on those at the entrance off of Lake Street and then o- off the entrance off of Griffith Street for the condos that can access the lot over there, so.
Okay, so that's maybe the top of what we would be able to work with, with others.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we provide, you know, no parking type of, and that, that's basically what those barricades were for. It was to keep cars out, but also just in the absence of having like some grassy areas to pound in no parking signs, then this was just kind of a blanket sign at the, at the entrance.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. All right.
Just to clear, I mean, those are just simply pack them up in the truck, drop them offs, similar to even the, like the parade this weekend, right? You saw cones and, and three tier barricades that were set up, um, you know, nothing involved. I agree, where we had the loaders and, and multiple truckloads back and forth and there, yeah.
From, from a logistics standpoint, it is, it is entirely different when we have to bring in fully capable CDL licenses with, to drive dump trucks and heavy equipment to start setting up and, and, um, unpacking for some of these special events. Almost all of them are, we're able to do with our seasonal staff, which is, that's, that's why we hire them for, um, you know, weekends and holidays. And so they can easily put that type of traffic control equipment in the back of the pickup trucks and they don't need CDLs and, and we can help out seamlessly that way.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Last on the new business temporary signage at Holland Blue Star, Ryan. And that is on page one eighty-three.
And so this was something that, uh, you discussed at your, your workshop meeting and, and wanting, uh, some sort of temporary signage placed at, at Holland and Blue Star while we have a, a larger, um, kind of rebranding effort and deciding on, on long-term signage and, and wayfinding. And so, um, you discussed some different ideas at your workshop. You kind of, there was kind of some maybe leaning towards, uh, seeing if, uh, council member, uh, Dean and, and Muncy and, uh, Gardner might be, uh, able to maybe put together some sort of temporary replica at, at Holland and Blue Star. So I, I did, uh, follow up with, uh, Superintendent Herbert after your meeting, uh, as well as the township manager. Cause it's, it's, it's their property, right? And so they kind of, they get a say really in, in what goes there ultimately. And, um, so, uh, Superintendent Herbert, you know, right away was like, hey, well, we have this sign that's kind of, um, you know, on this deck, outside of Mount Baldhead along the river that's similar and that hasn't always been there. That might be a good, you know, temporary solution at Holland and, and Blue Star for some more maybe visibility. He also, you know, raised the idea of, of, uh, you know, the sign at North and Blue Star could potentially be temporarily relocated. And so I, I talked with, um, Manager DeFranco. And, um, one thing that he did want me to, uh, kind of bring up is that, um, they're really looking at some, obviously redesign of Blue Star in general, particularly that, that intersection to where obviously it's a little challenging, uh, to, to, to make turns, especially to the left, uh, out of there. And so they're either looking at some, um, a different setup, maybe even potentially another roundabout there. That's something that he and the.
Oh, God, kidding me, dude.
Something he and the township, or I'm sorry, he and the, uh, the road commission are, are exploring options is to improve it. So, um, and that may happen sooner rather than, than later. So you wanted that on the radar and that, like, as you think about investment and, and intersection and, and what could potentially go there in the future, some of that will be dependent on, uh, what the intersection looks like. But, uh, he liked the idea of kind of relocating that, that sign, uh, that's along the river to, to, um, Holland and Blue Star. Wasn't, uh, he did suggest, uh, you know, he's like, you know, maybe if you need something that's temporary and just kind of, but also has some good quality. They found that the signs at the CVB helped them, uh, put together for, uh, the, the road closure when they were doing the roundabout construction might be an idea to, to pursue as well. Uh, he wasn't necessarily against a replica, but just would want to make sure that it's, you know, of a good quality. That's, that's, um, you know, gonna be good for that intersection. But, um, so I'll leave it to, to the council to kind of provide some direction on what you'd like to do.
I'll, I'll, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to direct the city manager to temporarily relocate the Sagatuck sign along the river to Holland Blue Star until new signage is designed and approved.
Second.
Thank you.
Question?
I will say I'm a little bummed, but I.
I know.
Because it is, you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, you know, they take a lot of pictures along that, you know, area and it's a beautiful backdrop. So maybe it can be temporarily moved and then maybe make one just like it and then put it back eventually. But yes, I understand that's probably the easiest one to relocate.
And I, I would say it, it quite possibly was made at exactly the same time as the other one. It's the same color, it's got, it's got the same type of, I'm like.
Lettering is the same font?
Even, yeah, same font, even the, um, the kind of rough hewn wood is exactly the same. So I think it might, might almost be a carbon copy of what was, what was there.
Yeah.
And, and, and once again, if, if, if the township manager wants quality, I, I'm not sure.
Right, right. And, and as, as much as I was looking forward to digging a couple holes next to you and Russ. When, when I saw this brought up in our packet, I think it's genius. I mean, it honestly, um, uh, I think just using that sign temporarily, it's quick. Not gonna take you guys much time, is it? Is that gonna, uh, uh, and so I, I think that's gonna be a, a quick temporary. I also want to thank council for listening to me, because I, I know I've been talking about this, uh, for about a year now. And I was glad to add it to the agenda on Wednesday and, uh, glad that we're gonna do something there. Again, it is a main order. I know we, a lot of us use that GPS, but when you're traveling, you're coming to town. I use my GPS a lot too, but when I'm traveling, I'm distracted a lot. And, uh, I think it was very important to at least have something there until we get our wayfinding done. And, and I don't think the, I, I seriously don't think our wayfinding discussion will be finished, uh, by the end of summer. So it hasn't even started yet, so.
Yes, I'm very disappointed. I really pictured a sign that was signed, Scott did this.
I know, Greg did this.
You know, you, you would have ended up with, with cars coming to a screeching halt for turning around and going, and going to Douglas.
I was gonna be there in a flannel shirt.
We were gonna go by my artistic direction, excuse me, and I, and I, and I think it would have been quite beautiful.
You have, you have worked miracles with hay bales and, and, and words. I, I give you that, yes.
But I appreciate the suggestion. Who suggested using that sign? As a temporary, I mean, that's brilliant.
I'm, I'm almost convinced it's. It must be exactly from the same era, same time. I mean, it's, it's the twin. It's, I think it's the twin of the sign that was destroyed.
It's the same.
And it's saving us from any accidents with a chainsaw, you know, or.
I would like to thank Ryan for, for really involving the township, because it is actually their property. That sign is probably a quarter mile into the township, so they've got a right to sort of.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you for coordinating with Mr. Franco. That is great.
All right, well, this is a voice vote, so all in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any public comments? I'm guessing no. Uh, Dan?
On behalf of the chief and on behalf of my co-conspirators in the fire board, thanks for adopting the budget. That makes it now, it was unanimously adopted here also, and this also in the township. And as I said, we go to the public hearing, whatever it is, June sixteenth or June twelfth, whatever it is.
That's great, Dan. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your service.
Thanks, Steve.
On the board. Uh, any, I think that's it for public comments. Respondents, uh, we have a message from Renee Zeta, who was here at the workshop and spoke to us about Baldhead. And then Jamie, um, we're providing notice for.
July and August upcoming vacancies on boards.
Chris?
Could we, um, have, make sure that shows what the end date is when they have to have their application in my?
Yes.
It, I, I didn't see.
The notice.
It's in the notice.
To put it in.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Great. Uh, any questions about that? Okay, um, council comments, Chris?
You know, I'm feeling pretty good. I mean, we had a good discussion. It relieved a lot of my concerns. I still have some, but I think I can work out, work those through with Lauren.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Lauren, um, I know the mayor mentioned it, but just a reminder about the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Sagatuck Wilds Nature Preserve, um, Thursday at eleven AM. Um, I was out there today and it's a little muddy. So if you're going out there and you're planning on doing the hike, um, make sure you wear your boots and there's ticks. So make sure you're like prepared for that if you are concerned about that. But we're gonna have rain the next couple of days, so it might get even muddier. So just keep that in mind, um, if you're planning on going to that. Um, thanks to all the volunteers who, um, helped with the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, I know they were trying to get those together at the last minute, so I'm glad everybody was able to do that. And thanks to our local veterans who participated in the parade. Thank you, Scott. Um, town was really busy this weekend. Um, it was really great to see the sunshine, even though the cooler temperatures, but it just made everybody want to do some shopping and eating and being in our businesses. So that was really great that we had, um, an unofficial kickoff of the summer was busy and it was really great. And then just, uh, another note, I, I know I've mentioned this earlier, but Kalamazoo Lake is extremely low right now. Sitting over at the Red Dock, working at the Red Dock, there was a number of boats that got stuck this weekend. Um, I don't know if there's any kind of signage that we can put. The depth was about this deep in some areas of Kalamazoo Lake. Um, I know in the past, um, you know, locals have put up, you know, random things in the middle to mark those low areas.
The rooster.
But I don't know if there's something that the city can do, because it's definitely on, you know, our side of things. So it's basically middle of Kalamazoo Lake over to the north area is definitely on the, uh, Sagatuck side of things. If there's some sort of marker we can put out there, because otherwise those really big boats, it's extremely expensive to tow them off from those. You know, small boats can kind of maneuver yourself off from that, but the really big ones, it's an extremely expensive, uh, endeavor to get them off from those low spots. So I saw that last year and it's happening again already this year, so that's all.
Yeah.
Um, I'd just like to congratulate the clerk on a safe and secure election that kept flying colors in the audience. So thank you, Jamie, for that. Um, I would also like to thank our first responders, uh, and our city staff and particularly our DPW staff for the storm response. You know, I'm really proud of, of your team, Scott. I mean, it takes a lot of courage to be out at two-thirty in the morning. You know, when, when, when there's live power lines all over and, you know, and, and you're never sure what you're gonna find at that hour after a storm. So, uh, just the courage of your team, the perseverance, the dedication to duty, I just, you know, and that goes to all the first responders. But I, I really, since you're here tonight, I really want to flag that. And you too, Ryan, for, for all the late nights, you know, or the late night you put in and the full days. I, I'm still, I'm still astounded at how quickly the city's streets were opened and people were getting their power restored. So I'm just really, I'm really proud of them for, for their efforts. The city's streets were opened and people were getting their power restored. So I just really, I'm really proud of them for, for their efforts after that storm.
Gregory.
Um, yeah, um, I just want to mention, uh, we talked about the, uh, great storm recovery by Scott and, uh, Ryan. On ninety-two seven The Van with Ryan. Ryan was on the show and, uh, he, he talked, we had a great show overall, but, um, with Ryan's segment. Um, we covered quite a bit. I, I feel like we could have done another half hour segment. But, um, he covered, uh, the storm coverage. He covered the, uh, a- all of the updates as far as our parks, as far as our. Uh, Thursday, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, updates to the coming up soon to the Village Square. Uh, he talked about restrooms, uh, the, the new restrooms and so much. And, uh, he was a wonderful guest on the show. I want to thank you again for that. Also want to thank the garden club. I've been a part of that, uh, group for many years, helping to raise money and then, and then eventually, uh, getting on. The Sagatuck, uh, city budget now, um, uh, with, uh, planning thirty-seven pots all around town. I do a little pep talk for the kids about the importance of serving community and volunteering. And, uh, had a, had another great event with them as well and, uh, thank them for the beautification of the downtown. It looks great. I don't think, uh, I don't think we could pay anybody fifteen hundred to maintain, uh, all the great work that they do here to make our town so pretty. Um, and then also want to remind everybody, uh, June first, this coming June first kicks off Pride Week. And, uh, so that'll be going on festivities will be in Douglas, uh, but will be, will be, you'll see festival and everybody's celebrating. And folks coming over here as well. We have lots of visitors that come specifically for this week as well. The big kickoff party and, uh, party there is gonna be in Berry Field this weekend or the following weekend. Um, but, uh, find out more information there on their webpage or tune into ninety-two seven The Van this coming Sunday. Jim Babcock and the folks there that are helping with Pride Fest will be on the show to talk about all of the events leading up to.
Yeah, just want to add on my thanks to this, to the staff. I mean, between the elections, the storm coverage. And, you know, I got up early this morning, went for a walk through town and it was spotless, you know, after Memorial Day weekend. So. I mean, Scott, your team's doing a phenomenal job. Saw 'em out there. There wasn't a piece of trash in the street. There was, the garbage cans were empty. Everything was clean. It was really nice to see. Uh, great Memorial Day event, uh, the ceremony I found was really.
Moving.
Very well organized, very touching. Uh, and I was impressed to see a city council member participating with a firearm in his hand.
I know.
Redefines the role city council can play in this town.
You're a bright red.
And want to thank PPW for the, putting the Evasive Species Back Sheet on the landing page. It's a phenomenal idea. It's really good, great. Uh, and the other thing I'm just gonna mention is I was so impressed with the number of students that participate. In our music program. I mean, for the size of school, we have to see the, the size of that band. I was just floored. So whoever is, it is that runs the music department there deserves, uh, a special thanks from all of us. Cause it's really impressive and it's so good for the kids to ground them on something like music. So, and that's, that's all I had.
Uh, well, Gregory, uh, stole my pitch for ninety-two point seven The Van on Sunday. The last segment was with Ryan and you did a really nice job interviewing and there was great information. So thank you for having our city manager on. Um, I'd like it that we can, uh, have challenging discussions and learn from each other and listen. Um, that's what effective teams do. So thank you for being an effective team. And with that, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, all in favor say yes.
Yeah.